Hi, I'm Courtney Petrowski, Outreach Coordinator at Wareham Community Television. As you may know, WCTV is your source for live coverage of town meetings, Board of Selectmen meetings, and other municipal meetings, as well as local parades, gatesman games, and school sporting events. What you may not know is WCTV is also home to a wide variety of locally-produced original programming made by your Wareham neighbors. From morning talk shows to live music events to health and wellness programs, WCTV can help you put your ideas on television.
Hey folks, my name is Bruce Scannan. I moved to Wareham back in the summer of 2009, and in the fall of 2009 was introduced to the wonderful world of WCTV.
I came to Wareham in 2003, and I couldn't wait for this station to open up.
My name is Lynell Butterfield. I live in Wareham and have for the past 12 years. I've been involved with Wareham Community Television since they moved to this building, about three years.
My name is Mike Dunphy. I'm 24 years old. I've lived in Wareham my whole life.
I'm Patty Rumney, and I host Your Daily Gumbo.
I'm a volunteer, I'm a member, and I view myself as an independent producer.
I decided to do something a little different and launched Field of Music, which is a live music show.
I produce, direct, edit, shoot, work sound on a TV show that we have called At the Hub.
I'm just looking to make music and to also incorporate the music with that visual, which I think people are looking to see.
Bringing out the positives in Wareham rather than focusing on negatives, that's my goal.
So I have a couple of things: history, technology, and being informed, and an educational mission.
We do this live show because I wanted the bands to be able to have an audience.
I've gotten people on the show who are in various boards and commissions in the town to explain to us what they do, what are their purposes, because I think most people don't really know.
I'm working on a program called I Wonder Where the Yellow Went, which is a story of Wareham sewer system.
We have the show on Wednesday nights, and it's great. We have live acts from around southeastern Massachusetts and Rhode Island.
We have some interesting guests. We've had animal chiropractors, acupuncturists, human chiropractors, equine-assisted therapists, belly dancers.
No, I have no formal training.
Nothing on a real professional level.
No formal background, nothing.
That's one of the beauties of working as a volunteer at a place like WCTV. You don't need a lot of experience or any experience at all to come down and learn how to do what we do here.
The expertise is here, and it's willing expertise.
I just think it's fun.
Why do I keep doing it? It's a lot of fun.
I'm really enjoying my time here.
Keep watching.
For more information on these shows and the full program lineup for each of our stations and internet stream, visit us at www.warehamtv.org. And don't just watch TV, make it. Thank you for watching WCTV.
Are you tired of paying high bank fees?
It's not about the fees, it's really about you when you come here.
Why not join PCT Federal Credit Union, formed by educators and now open to the entire Wareham community? Unlike most banks, the credit union has no annual credit card fees, free checking, free ATM withdrawals, and generally lower loan rates. And we are a not-for-profit organization, which means we can focus on serving members rather than maximizing our profit.
The banks didn't know my name. Never mind it, I got a husband and a son.
Some banks you go, it's banking. You're doing this, you're doing your service, and then you're leaving. Here, it's just friendly.
The people are what makes a big difference.
Join the credit union family at Plymouth County Teachers Federal Credit Union.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please sit in and take your seats so that we can get started. I need anyone who is a non-voter that's not registered to be on this side of the auditorium down front. Will the colors please come forward? Ladies and gentlemen, you must be in your seats to be counted. Will you please hold up your cards? And will the colors please take account? Please hold your cards in the air so the colors can take their count. You must be seated for them to count you. Please hold your cards up until the colors have told you that they have counted your row. Michael, could you please see Mr. Shabano? Please take a seat for the colors and take account. Any non-registered voters must be down front and to my left. Everyone would please take a seat. On my right, number one. Can I speak into the mic?
Forty-one.
Right there, section one forty-one.
That's correct.
Section one forty-one. On my right?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. In the center?
One twenty-three.
One twenty-three. And on the left?
Fifty-five.
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 We have 264 voters in the hall. We have a quorum. I will now call this meeting to order. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand. We will now have the scouts from Troop 55 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. "To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." And now we will have the showstoppers, who are a young group who do the singing for community service, to sing our national anthem.
Oh, can you see by the thunderly light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts be watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare the comms first singed, gay and blue through the night, that our flag was still there. Oh, say the sad stars bade that our ever o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave."
Thank you very, very much to both groups. Now, if I could have the town clerk read the return of the warrant.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Plymouth SS, to either of the constables of the town of Wareham, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and move those of voters of the town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in Precinct 1, Wareham Town Hall, 54 Marion Road; Precinct 2, FOB Hammond Elementary School, 13 Highland Avenue, Onset; Precinct 3, Minnet Forest Elementary School, 63 Minnet Avenue, Wareham; Precinct 4 and Precinct 5, John W. Deekes School, 760 Main Street, South Wareham; Precinct 6, Wareham Lodge of Elks, 2855 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, on Tuesday, April 3rd, 2012, at 8:00 a.m. for the election of town offices designated in the official ballot, to be adjourned until Monday, April 23rd, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium, 7 Viking Drive, Wareham, Mass., at which time the general business of the town shall be transacted and to act on the following articles.
I will waive the reading of the warrant.
You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof on or before Friday, March 16th, 2012, in at least one public place in each precinct within the town, and by publishing a copy of the warrant on or before April 5th, 2012. Hereof fail not, and make sure due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk of the time and place of said meeting, given under our hands this 13th day of March in the year 2012, Wareham Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Ladies... Ladies and gentlemen? Ladies and gentlemen?
I can't hear you.
Ladies and... Ladies and gentlemen? Testing. 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 Ladies and gentlemen, if you have vacant seats, if you could on the end, please slide in and let others come in. We have a lot of people that are trying to get into the seats. We need to get going on our business. So if you would just slide in a little bit, if you could, and allow someone to have a seat so that they don't need to climb over you. And ladies and gentlemen, please, if we can keep the chatter down so that we can get going. Thank you. I would like to introduce you to the dignitaries that are here on stage with me tonight. We have to my right Attorney Richard Bowen, who is Town Constable from the town of Wareham. We have our interim town administrator, Mr. John Foster, who is also the town treasurer. We have Mr. Derek Sullivan, who is our financial analyst. We have our deputy moderator, Mr. Joe Ashley. We have Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Stephen Holmes. To his right, Selectman Kara Winslow. To her right, Selectman Alan Slaven. To him's right, Mrs. Ellen Bagley. And then on the far right, we have our finance committee. We have Bonnie Cattulli, Dick Paulson, Frank Keating, Larry McDonald, and Sam Gray. We also are... Let me check and see if we have our newest school committee member, Mr. Michael Flaherty. Michael, are you here? Okay, in the back, we have our new school committee member, Mr. Michael Flaherty. And also up on stage, we have our town accountant, Mr. Justin Cole. For a town meeting, we do have a few rules. Those rules that... Those rules that are provided by law shall be determined by the votes of practice contained in Robert's Rules of Order, the 75th Anniversary Edition, town meeting time, town meeting tradition, and those rules set forth by the moderator. In accordance with Master in the Law Chapter 39, Section 15, and Article 12 of the October 27, 2003 town meeting, and approved by the Attorney General on November 21, 2003, whenever a two-thirds vote is required by statute, such a vote may be declared as such by the moderator without account, and be recorded as such by the clerk upon such declaration. Provided, however, that if seven or more voting members of the town meeting doubt the vote, a counted vote shall be taken. The warrant, which was duly posted in every precinct and posted on the town website, is the agenda for town meeting. And town meeting does not come to an end until all the agenda items on the warrant have been decided, either by being approved, defeated, or no action deliberately taken. The moderator will ask for a motion for each article, and then the vote and the debate is going to be on the motion. Now, you have a warrant in front of you, and the motion may be slightly different, which is why we have them up on the screen. So what the debate and discussion is, is on the motion that shows up on the screen.
Swipe one of those.
Following the motion, the moderator will ask the proponent to speak to the motion.
Thank you, we're all out.
And after the proponent speaks, the moderator will ask the Board of Selectmen for their vote, and then the vote and recommendation from the finance committee, at which time the debate will be opened. Voters should approach the microphone if you wish to speak, and please clearly state your name. Please remember that all remarks should be directed to the motion before you. Please be considerate to those who are at the microphone and listen to what they have to say. They should not be interrupted. Please be respectful of them. There will be no calling out or any inappropriate behavior. The moderator presides and regulates the meeting and decides all questions of order, makes all public declarations of votes. And the vote may be questioned by seven people. Now, the tradition of the Wareham Town Meeting has been allowed, has been to allow the senator or nautical five minutes to speak, and then two minutes for anyone else who wishes to comment on the motion. Therefore, I would ask this body to move that this tradition be continued with the caveat that as the moderator, I cannot cut someone off mid-sentence but give them the opportunity to finish with a warning that their two minutes is coming to an end. I may also stop the speaker before two minutes are up if they're drifting from the motion before you or is just repeating what someone else has said. Do I have a motion to allow permanent five minutes? I have a second?
Aye.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Amendments. Amendments can be offered to any article being debated. To offer an amendment, the voter needs to give the text to the clerk in town in writing. And the tellers do have a quorum for you. We need a piece of paper. Please do not tear your card in half and try to use that. The moderator will recognize the mover of the amendment, and the amendment will be debated and then voted up or down before returning to the debate on the article as a whole. Amendments to amendments will not be allowed. Now reconsideration. The purpose of reconsidering a vote is to commit correction of hasty, ill-advised, or erroneous action, or to take into account added information or a changed situation that has developed since the taking of the vote. After a lot of thought, review of practices in other towns, and based on prior town meeting tradition in Wareham, the policy for a motion of reconsideration is that it must be moved on the same day by the vote to be reconsidered or taken. It must be made by a member who voted on the prevailing side. It must be seconded, and it is debatable. And it will only be permitted if there was a hasty, ill-advised, or erroneous action, or if there was additional information that was not previously available, or if there has been a changed situation that developed since taking the vote. Now, remember, non-voters that are sitting down in front and you will not be voting. Some important things to remember is that exiting and entering the auditorium, if for some reason you need to leave, please use this door on my left. And that's to protect the integrity of the meeting so that only registered voters are coming in and out, or non-voters are coming in, but they're directed to where they need to sit. Please do not use the door on the right or the door to the rear. However, if in the event we do have a fire alarm, you will proceed to the nearest exit as safely and orderly as you can. But when you return, remember, use this entrance on my left. There is a fire lane out front. If you park in the fire lane, you may want to go out and move your vehicle because that will be enforced. We do have for this town meeting babysitting available. Some of the clubs of the high school have some students who are willing to provide babysitting services for tonight, tomorrow night, and next week. So if you do need a babysitter, you're welcome to bring them to the room that's designated for babysitting. Now, town meeting is not an open town meeting, and therefore, the policy on photography is that I allow it only if I am advised ahead of time. I do have to... I have one member of the press who has said that he will take some photos. However, he has been advised that no photos may be taken during a vote count. One other thing to remember, there is no smoking on school property. So that means do not go out to your vehicle and sit in your vehicle and try to have a cigarette. You must leave school property. That's state law. Now, before we begin, Article 2, Section 26 of the Town Trotter states that all department heads shall attend the sessions of each town meeting for the purpose of providing the town meeting with information pertinent or important articles. I will now call for a roll call. Board of Health? Chief Assessing Officer? Community Development? Conservation? Council on Aging? Data Processing? EMF? Inspection Services? Municipal Maintenance? Planning? Police Department? Shawfish-Havermaster? Town Accountant? Town Clerk? Town Collective Treasurer? Library? Water Pollution Control? School Department? I have one final announcement. Our town meeting has three legislative committees that are committees established of town meeting and report. We have a resignation, so we have a vacancy currently on the finance committee. We also have a vacancy on capital planning. And we have a vacancy on planning... Planning Board, Frank? And then, as of June, we will have other openings. I encourage you, if you have an interest, to please go to the town website and fill out an application. Now, consent agendas. Articles on a consent agenda are exceptions to the general process of town meeting. And these are articles that should not generate controversy but that can be properly voted without debate. And they're generally standard articles that would come before town meeting year after year, or articles that would not generally have any discussion on them. I have several consent agendas that I would like to put together in the hopes that we could speed town meeting up. And what I'm going to do is I will announce the articles. If you are not in agreement that you want to vote them without any debate or as a consent agenda, just holler "Hold", and I will take it out, and we will act on that article in its regular place. So the first consent agenda that I have is Articles 2 and 3. Article 2 is to authorize the selectmen and the town administrator to apply for and enter into contracts. And Article 3 allows the town treasurer to enter into compensating balances. And these are articles that come before us every year. If I have no objection, I will entertain a motion for favorable action. The second? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Passed unanimously. And the next consent or agenda, and I will take this one slowly, and I will explain. Article 12, Article 14, Article 16, Article 17, and Article 29. Article 12 and Article 16 are already included in the budget article that we will be taking action on. So therefore, we do not need to take these articles. Article... 14 is going to be carried over to the special town meeting on May 21st. So again, we do not need to act on that one. Article 29 is going to be carried over
Article Twenty-Nine is going to be carried over to the fall town meeting. So I would like to take Article Twelve, Article Fourteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, and Twenty-Nine as a consent agenda, and these all will have a motion for indefinite postponement. Hearing no objection, I will call for a motion for indefinite postponement.
A motion.
And a second? Now I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a majority. Okay, I have two more consent agendas that I will ask for. We have Article Thirty-One and Article Thirty-Three. Both of these articles are to pay for a payment on police cruises. Article Thirty-One is to make the payment, the third payment, of a three-year lease. Article Thirty-two is to make the second payment on a three-year lease.
Thirty-three.
And that would be by raise and appropriate. Hearing no objection, I would accept a motion to raise and appropriate the money for Articles Thirty-One and Thirty-Three. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes by a majority. The next consent agenda is for Articles Thirty-four and Thirty-seven. These are our regular articles that are presented by Community and Economic Development. It pertains to the septic loan program that is run by the town. This is the seventh year that the town has offered that program. This would require a two-thirds vote, because it requires borrowing $200,000. And the second article is to allow the interest that's being accumulated to be used for maintaining this program. If I hear no objection, I would accept a motion for Articles Thirty-four and Thirty-Seven to raise and appropriate.
Motion.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And for the last one that we have, for the consent agenda, would be Articles Thirty-eight and Thirty-nine. It was unanimous, unanimous, the previous article was unanimous, two-thirds by unanimous vote. The final consent agenda would be Article Thirty-eight and Thirty-nine. This is for community preservation. This is a regular housekeeping article. This allocates money that goes into their fund, and also to pay the debt on Bryant Farm and Tremont Neal that we have been paying regularly over the years. Hearing no objection, I will entertain a motion for favorable action on Articles Thirty-eight and Thirty-nine.
A motion.
And a second?
Aye.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes by a majority. We have an article, Article Four, which is to hear the reports of boards and committees. We have a couple of reports that I think it is very important to hear, because there are articles that we will be getting to, and I think it's important that we hear the reports before we do any of those articles. So I would entertain from the Finance Committee a motion for Article Four, I believe it is, to hear the reports of the School Committee, and any other committees that find it expedient to do so. I believe it would be the School Committee, and we have a Wind Power Study Committee that was put together at a prior town meeting that will be giving a report.
I move that the town hear the reports of the selectmen and the School Committee as required by the statute, and any other reports from officers and committees who consider it expedient to give them.
I hear a second? Have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. May we have a report of the Wind Power Study Committee, please?
Thank you, Metamoderator. John Charbonneau, Town Planner and Member of the Wind Energy Review Committee. Article Forty-One of the previous fall town meeting set up this committee to study the impacts of wind energy. And even though the article was ultimately denied by the Attorney General's Office because of a posting glitch, the advice of Town Council was for the committee to continue their work, because the AG's office has no influence over the establishment of the committee, only what's within the bylaws. So the committee continued our work, and this is our report. The committee members were Mike Poehl, Chairperson, myself, Miles Burke, Director of Inspeccional Services, Joe Mulkern of the Conservation Commission, Rich Seeker, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and Mike McHale, and Mike Skiarafa of the Board of Assessors, and Mike Skiarafa as Assistant at Large. The way the committee decided to approach this report was to divide the effects of wind turbines into several broad categories, and then identify the impacts within each category, and research each for discussion. That way, we could come back to each meeting with everyone researching the same topic, and coming back with multiple ideas, and toss them around back and forth, and we found that that was the most effective way to do things, rather than sending individual members off to research on their own. That way, we got opinions of the entire committee on each issue. So, issue number one was impacts to human health and well-being. Issue number two was visual impacts. Issue number three, impacts to public safety. Issue number four was environmental impacts. Issue five, fiscal impacts. And issue six was aesthetic impacts. The first one, and the broadest category, was the effect of wind turbines on health and well-being. This is the broadest and most widely publicized category of impacts, and the primary health impact to residents is usually auditory or sound-related. Sources from wind turbines include sound from the hub or the nacelle, and the effect of airflow over the wind turbine blades themselves. This tends to be a less steady hum that can be eliminated by sound-isolating techniques known as low-frequency modulation. The blade sound is more of a whooshing or broadband sound consisting of multiple frequencies, and it may also include a low-frequency vibration along with it. This effect can be reduced through blade design and restricting operation, but cannot be totally eliminated. The sound becomes more pronounced as the blade ages and develops imperfections such as nicks, divots, and the surface becomes rougher. And sounds can also be magnified by the presence of multiple turbines. Now, positive impacts of turbines are the reduction of other methods of power generation, and improved air quality from reduction of coal and fuel, oil combustion, reduced risk of nuclear plant waste and accident, and also reduced carbon production. So in this category, the committee was not assigned the task of actually preparing a bylaw, rather than, rather to just study the effects and come back with conclusions on each category, potentially for use in preparation of a bylaw. So we concluded that it's important for any wind turbine bylaw to include thresholds for noise emissions during the day and at night, and a point of reference from which noise is measured, because that's the key, is lots of people talk about sound, whether it's, you know, car radios, whether it's wind turbines, what have you, but it's a very inexact science as far as where you're going to measure these from, whether it be the property line, or a building, or a roadway. The bylaw should also include minimum setback standards from the nearest property line, the nearest structure, the nearest public roadway, or a combination of all three. Some bylaws that we researched actually included individual varying setbacks from all three of these things. And we found in the research that setbacks are the single most important aspect in the regulation of wind turbines. Second impact is visual impacts. This is related primarily to shadow flicker and strobe effects, and these are two different phenomena. Shadow flicker is caused by the shadows cast by the rotating blades, and the strobe effect is caused by observation or flashing of the sun through the rotating blades. And these impacts are actually the most predictable. The main impact is the nuisance of shadows flickering within nearby buildings through windows and possible distraction to drivers. Our conclusions on this were that any bylaw should include maximum flicker exposure standards, and these are the most predictable things to measure, because of the fact that we know when the sun rises, we know when it sets, we know where it's going to be in the sky at any given time. And as with noise impacts, setback standards will play a major role in reducing the impacts of shadow flicker. Third was the impacts to public safety, and this tends to be one of the more overlooked impacts. One effect tends to be ice throw, which is the effect of actual pieces of ice being thrown by the rotating blades in cold weather climates. And this is really a very complicated formulas to figure this out. Distance depends on factors such as rotor direction, hub height, blade rotation speed, local radios, and wind speed. And other impacts can include potential malfunction related to fire, debris throw, and environmental contamination from leaking fluid. One very underrated impact of wind turbines that there really, I haven't heard a lot of discussion of in, over the, in recent years, is the potential impact on radio interference. As the blade rotates, blades rotate, microwaves are quote-unquote chopped and reflected, causing potential interference with point-to-point microwaves, wireless computer networks, instructional television broadcasts for schools, DTN weather used by farmers and construction companies, intercity wired telephone via microwave, and cellulite interconnection via microwave. There is also potential interference with Doppler radar. It could happen that aircraft targets, and to some extent, weather features seen by NOAA radars can be temporarily lost, fail to be located, shadowed by the radio signature of the turbine farm, or misidentified, and the wind turbines may also lead to false detection of aircrafts. This can be partially alleviated by using non-metallic blades. Our conclusions on this were it is recommended that turbines be equipped with either a control system that shuts the turbine down during icing conditions, or that any bylaw require that an area be established around the turbine that represents the overall risk area for ice throw. The best mitigation technique for interference is to avoid locating a turbine in the radar line of, radar line of sight of the Doppler radar. It is also recommended that any bylaw include requirement that the permitting agency require a minimum bond to fund demolition cost escalation risk, as well as a provision to return the land to its previous condition as much as possible. Fourth impact are environmental impacts. It's been documented that wind turbines can cause deaths and injury to bats, birds, insects, and other living creatures typically by collision with turbine blades, and as a result of site preparation and alteration. In comparison with coal extraction, though, the impact of wind energy on bird mortality is negligible. Due to site preparation, mammals, amphibians, and reptiles are likely to be displaced. Unlike most other energy production, though, no pollution is produced during operation of wind turbines, and the pollution costs of manufacturing and the installation are recovered in a few months of operation compared to other energy sources. Some of our conclusions, the possibility of hydraulic or other fluid leaks or other discharge from wind turbine installations should be considered during review of plans, as should the risk of crop contamination. Existing data on migratory and other movements of wildlife should be used to develop predictive models of risk. Pollution containment strategies should be identified. Specific species or sets of species most at risk in areas of high potential wind resources should be identified. Environmental impacts of wind turbines in the context of other human activities and energy production should be considered. And we believe that this is particularly pertinent considering the fact that wind turbines are being proposed to be located near cranberry bogs in this area of the state, so that contamination part is particularly vital. Impact number five are fiscal impacts. Wind turbines are unlike other commercial structures, because they are single-use. While a commercial retail building can be repurposed in several ways, wind turbines cannot. In other words, when their use is done, they just sit there. You can't reuse them for anything. In the event of bankruptcy or other failure, a non-operational turbine could present aesthetic and safety impacts to the town. And wind turbines are believed to have a limited lifetime on the scale of twenty years. Municipal installation of wind turbines could result in a positive income flow, however, for the town, either through direct sales of electricity back into the utility grid, or reduced utility costs. Also, additional revenue to the town would result from personal property tax, as with other commercial properties. Impact on property values is likely to be negative, at least initially, within the view sheet of the turbine. However, no drop in value due to turbines has been actually documented. Loss of property value is likely to be revenue-neutral to the town, as the tax rate would be adjusted as necessary. So our conclusions are that the economic viability of wind turbines has been cited by opponents of wind energy. The committee decided this aspect was irrelevant as an impact to the town. It was noted that leaking fluid or other discharge from a wind turbine sighted near a cranberry bog or other agricultural area could result in forced destruction of part or all of a crop. It is recommended that the town investigate the use of bonding to cover the cost of decommissioning of a wind turbine, including establishing production thresholds that trigger decommissioning. Also, site restoration should be included in the bonding. Lastly, opportunities for sighting on town land should be investigated. Agreement signed between landowners and wind energy companies in other locations should be consulted for possible protection of property values. And lastly, we dealt with aesthetic impacts, and it seems to be a consensus among scholars is that it is impossible to objectively evaluate the aesthetics of wind turbines. The beauty or lack of beauty of a wind turbine is totally in the eye of the beholder. It has been reported that some people feel a sense of intimidation when viewing or approaching turbines. It appears that the scale of the turbine and its place in the landscape may be important factors in judging the aesthetics of the turbines. Turbines that are required to have blinkers and blinking lights for visibility at night may be a contributor to light pollution. Also, an issue that the, that the committee discussed was if a wind turbine has some kind of flashing light or non-flashing light at nighttime to warn aircrafts, that doesn't take into account the blades that, that may be rotating. So, yeah, an aircraft may be warned about a wind turbine hub, but when you have a 170-foot blade rotating, the aircraft gets no warning about that. They are also likely to have supporting structures, fences, and other accoutrements that may contribute or detract from the aesthetics of the installation location. It is recommended that scale and size of proposed turbines be considered during the permitting process in a manner consistent with other building projects in the town, and supporting structures should be similarly assessed. And that concludes the report of the Wind Energy Review Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau. Before we go any further, ladies and gentlemen, we have reached capacity in terms of fire load. So therefore, we're going to have to make arrangements to move some people to an overflow room in the cafeteria, which has been set up, so that you will be able to hear and speak from the cafeteria. I am going to ask all of the non-registered voters to I am going to ask all of the non-registered voters to please go to the cafeteria. If you would please exit and go down to the cafeteria. And then I'm going to ask the people in the rear who are standing, after they have left, if you would please come down and take a seat. I am going to ask my deputy moderator, Joe Ashley, to go to the cafeteria to monitor the room. And Jeff Tabor, are you still here? I would like my teller, Jeff Tabor, if you would please go to the cafeteria as my reserved teller in the cafeteria. Are you ladies, are you registered voters? Okay. If the people in the rear that were standing would please come down and have a seat. And then we're going to allow the other registered voters who were patiently waiting to come in, to come in and have a seat down front. Yeah, slide way in. Pat and John? Pat and John, you'll cover this section as well? So if we could now have the other registered voters who were waiting to come in to come in and sit. And while they're making their way in, I am going to ask if the chairman of the board of selectmen wishes to address the body.
Madam Moderator, thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the annual town meeting. I apologize for this, but I get a little sinus infection. So, I'd like to briefly welcome you and thank so many of you for coming, to give you kind of a brief update as to where the board has been since November, since our last meeting. Several important things have happened, and I just wanted to address some of those quickly. In March, as per the charter, the Board of Selectmen voted to renew the agreement for town council with Blatman, Berbowski, and Mead. And one of the reasons we did that is because of their all-inclusive services. And last year, we saw some reduction in legal bills and fees by combining many of the committee's services into Mr. Bowen's firm. And so we're hoping that this year, with that renewed agreement for the same cost, that we can reduce our legal fees even further. And I'd like at this time to introduce the representative from Blatman, Berbowski, and Mead, Mr. Rich Bowen, whom many of you know, who has been selected as our town council by the Board of Selectmen. Secondly, at the opening of town meeting, we have our annual elections. And so in following that, we have a reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. So I'm happy to report that, well, we'll see if I'm happy in 12 months, but we're happy to report that the board, and I thank them for their confidence, selected me as their chairman. Mrs. Kara Winslow, to my right, was selected as the clerk of the board. Mrs. Ellen Begley, two seats down from Kara, who is serving in her second year. We'd like to welcome our newest member, who was elected during the town meeting, Mr. Alan Slaven. Alan? And somewhere out there in the audience tonight is our fifth member, who at some point in the next year, I'm kidding. Hopefully, in the next couple of days, Mr. Peter Titelbaum, who is our selectman-elect at this time, will be, those government issues with the state will be finalized, and Peter will be sworn in. So we're hoping to get that resolved very quickly. There's been a lot of work done over the last year on the 51 articles that you see in front of you. Many committees, there's just too many people to thank for their efforts over the past year. From committees to board members, the school department has done an extensive amount of work, the finance committee, members of the Board of Selectmen. And there is a gentleman here tonight, I'm pretty sure he's over here, Mr. Walter Cruz. Walter, would you stand up for a second, please? Walter is our former chairman. Please acknowledge Walter this evening. Thank you very much, Walter. You know, Walter served as our chairman over the past year, where many of these articles came from. And Walter gave many, many hours of volunteer service, to many, many, many countless hours of meetings to work on these articles with various boards. So thank you very much, Walter. We really appreciate that. Going forward, this evening, and I don't profess to tell you how to vote. You're going to vote the way you want to vote on these 51 articles, but, you know, these are very serious times, very trying times for the town. And I think that, in a way, from my philosophy, they can also be very exciting times. We have opportunities to make some changes. We have opportunities to do things different. And I think with the financial restraints that are placed on many municipalities across our state and across this country, that we have opportunities to do things differently. And so I would just ask you, I know that you've done your homework, that you've studied the articles. Somebody came by your house and grabbed you tonight and brought you here for a special purpose, I'm sure. But remember that your vote is going to legislate to us, into the administration, how we administer it to the town. So these are all very serious issues, and I would hope that if you have questions, this is the time and place, if they haven't been answered, to get them answered. One of the other exciting times in town right now is that, as many of you know, Mr. Andrews has resigned and gone off to another job, and we wish him well. And in the interim, the Board of Selectmen, two weeks ago, appointed Mr. John Foster as our interim town administrator. Mr. Foster, thank you. And there are many folks here who work on committees and things, and anything you need, we're all standing shoulder to shoulder with you, John, to help you out. Please don't rush his office and try to kill him in the first couple of weeks. We want John to stay on. Many of you know he's collected your taxes for many years. The other thing I think that's important, and then I'll sit down. Recently, there was a decision made, and I want to address this by the community television station. And the decision was made by them at the community TV to stop the internet streaming of, for example, this meeting tonight. I agree. And other meetings, like the Board of Selectmen meeting, school committee meetings, finance committee meetings, where any of those meetings were being streamed, those have been stopped, so you won't see them on your computer. I just want to make it very clear to all of our fellow citizens here, and those that will see this at home at some point, that the Board of Selectmen, my fellow board members, had nothing to do with that decision, nor were we informed about it before that decision was made. I'm sure that my fellow members have had many phone calls, as I have, complaining about transparency. We're trying to be more transparent than ever as your Board of Selectmen, and I really disagree with that decision. So what can you do about it? There was a table out here in the foyer, and Mr. Hurd was here, and please, call him, write him, email Wareham Community Television, and tell them that you don't like that decision. They need to know that. You know, there are many citizens tonight who are in Florida, many of our year-round residents who are in Florida. I know when I travel, I watch a lot of the different meetings over the internet, as do many of our summer residents who pay taxes in this town and want to be able to see our meetings. And as of today, that has been shut off. They're not watching this at home on their computers wherever they are. So there are many of your friends who tuned in at 7:00 to see Mrs. Smith open the town meeting, and they weren't able to see that. So please, take a moment out of your busy schedules and comment to WCTV that you disagree with that. Other than that, I would just want to say thank you very much. The board appreciates all of your support, and we'll do our best over the next 12 months to try to deliver quality product to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Heath, would the finance committee like to give its report?
Yes, Madam Moderator. Madam Moderator, a town meeting, voters, and attendees. In their letters of the last three years to the town meeting, the finance committee chairman have raised the issue that our financial practices were unsustainable. We emphasized our plight with the old adage, kicking the can down the road, and cautioned repeatedly that we had reached the end of the road when we balanced our budget by declaring a healthcare holiday during fiscal 2012. At this town meeting, the can we kicked is now a tangible item. It's the education of our kids. Going into the future, raising revenues will be as critical as controlling our costs. Both are going to not only be critical, but also painful. During the budget preparations of fiscal year 2013, it's become obvious that despite continued efforts to reduce our municipal costs, the state and federally mandated programs, as well as our labor costs and capital replacement needs, have outpaced our revenues. All aspects of our town government will be significantly impacted by this austere budget. Public safety, during the last two years, we returned our policing resources to those levels needed to ensure the safety of all our year-round and seasonal citizens and visitors by filling seven open positions in our police force and adding seasonal officers, procuring 11 licensed police vehicles to replace our aging fleet, and installing an improved communication system for use by all our town departments. Equally important, training has been reemphasized to ensure our emergency responders were well-prepared to provide the vital services regardless of the severity of the situation. We now, however, are being forced to consider staff reductions in failing to address needs such as EMS vehicles, more cruiser replacements, replacement of obsolete equipment, and upkeep and modernization of our public safety facilities. Staffing, our municipal maintenance department and library staffs were substantially reduced to previous budgets and remain at minimum levels. Our municipal properties are deteriorating at an increasing rate due to the lack of funds for the repairs and labor to keep them at acceptable maintenance levels. Many of our departments have been operating at minimal staff levels, and our expectations of service grow while their resources remain at constant levels. Benefits, costs have risen sharply and will continue to rise at rates faster than our revenue growth rates. Unfunded pension benefits will consume increasing amounts of our growth revenues. The cost of healthcare benefits for both our staff and retirees are anticipated to continue to rise faster than our ability to pay. The town will be forced to continue paying healthcare by laying off personnel. Unlike businesses, the town pays the full amount of unemployment benefits to employees in the current budget year. Where businesses save 100% when an employee is laid off, municipalities typically save only 65%. To pay the benefits of every three employees laid off, an additional employee has to be laid off. Currently, unemployment benefits are paid for over 70 weeks. That's by federal mandate. Technology, Wareham's computer system was over 12 years old when replacement began last year. Systems, both general town government and public safety, were beyond their life expectancies, and obsolescence was on the horizon. New servers, operating systems, and data links have been installed, but new terminals have yet to be procured. Vehicle fleet procurement of police vehicles was reinstituted through capital leasing in fiscal year 2011, when grant monies became available to do so. Eight were procured in FY 2011, but funds were available for only three in fiscal year 2012. No funds are currently budgeted for fiscal year 2013. Currently, EMS has only two instead of three ambulances operational. No funds have currently been appropriated to replace the third ambulance, currently not in service, and those still in service will be obsolete in a few years. No other vehicles have been scheduled for replacement from the general fund. When I say no other vehicles, I mean the entire town. Infrastructure and municipal maintenance staffing remains at minimal levels, and the town's infrastructure shows the lack of manpower needed to properly maintain our roads, buildings, and properties. As our roads deteriorate, so too will the real estate values of our businesses and residential properties. In FY 2011, the purchases of heavy vehicles were only prompted by the severe safety concerns that existed with older vehicles. Our municipal buildings, especially their roofs, need long-delayed maintenance and repairs. Human services, being at the bottom of the expenditure, less social services for citizens of all ages have been maintained at minimal levels, and now further cuts and even eliminations are an increasing possibility. Schools, every aspect of our school system, transportation, building maintenance, staffing, technology, curriculum, class sizes, textbooks, supplies, and student activities will be impacted by this current budget. Targeted federal and state aid delayed cutbacks in prior years. But now grants have expired, and aid has been substantially reduced, while mandates have increasingly become the physical responsibility of the town. The fiscal year 2012 budget can only be maintained at level funding by a one-time savings resulting from a healthcare premium holiday. The reduced school budget plagued with state unfunded mandates included in this warrant translates to 26 permanent staff reductions and class sizes in the upper grades in excess of 30 students. New curriculum mandates requiring new textbooks, replacement of aged computer technology, repairs to the schools, replacements and repairs needed to keep an overaged bus fleet in operation, and the need to upgrade at least one of our elementary schools to eliminate 10 30-year-old temporary classrooms have not been included in the FY 13 budget, but are being requested as debt exclusions and an override. Failure of those articles will increase the rate of the dismantling of our school system that began in fiscal year 2012, with a reduction of eight personnel and the elimination of a course of study at the middle school. You, the members of our town meeting, are being asked to decide whether we can afford to live within our inadequate revenues by dramatically cutting town services, educational programs, public safety, and municipal staff to the lowest service levels in recent history. Realizing that there are no right or wrong answers, you are being asked to make decisions. Whether needed, debt exclusions and an override are to be decided by all or a few of the voters of Wareham. As a member of this deliberative body, the spring 2012 meeting, you have been empowered to engage in the serious consideration of the issues before us and make decisions on behalf of your fellow citizens that will be major factors in the future of our town. I urge you to listen to all discussions with an open mind and give careful consideration to each of your personal votes. One aside, I would like to reinforce what Chairman Holmes has said about the amount of work that has gone into this budget. We're talking about employees who have spent hundreds, as a group, thousands of hours on this. We're talking about committee members who, as volunteers unpaid, have spent hundreds and as a group, thousands of hours on this. We're talking about a school committee that has also spent hundreds of hours working on this. I would hope that you will listen carefully to their comments and your considerations. They have spent a lot of time getting the facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. Do we have any other registered voters that are waiting for a seat? Any others out there? a seat? Any others out there? I believe we have one, two, three that I see. If we have anybody out there? I'll say.
If we need more than three seats, then I'm going to ask the department heads who are not registered voters to go to the cafeteria if we need additional seats.
Okay. Does the school department wish to give its report? Superintendent Rabinovich?
Good evening, and um, thank you for this opportunity to present to our town meeting a report about some of the cuts that are necessary for the budget that is before you this evening, and some of the ways that we are trying to mitigate those cuts. One year ago, during the budget presentation, I talked about an achievement gap that our students have with the state of Massachusetts' average scores. We came and we said, we need to do some of the following things to eliminate that achievement gap. The first thing was a full implementation of a program called Response to Intervention. The second thing was to implement an enhanced supervision and instructional leadership program. The third was to implement the new curriculum proposed by the state and the federal government at Wareham High School, and to implement new mass curriculum frameworks throughout the district K to 12. In fiscal 11, we had a, this is what was voted at town meeting, $24,648,177. In fiscal 12, what was voted was $25,390,794. And what we asked for, what we felt we needed to eliminate that gap was a 7% increase of $27,195,370 or $1,804,576. In today's budget, you will not see that number because after the hours of work that was done and meetings that were held, that number has been scaled back to less than last year's number. But we have ways to try to bring back some of those programs before you. Article 20 tonight, we will talk about, and that is to borrow some of money contingent upon a Proposition 2 and 1/2 debt exclusion for the purpose of funding instructional materials. So what we did is we took the textbooks and the technology, approximately $260,000 worth of textbooks out of the budget to lessen our budget, and we took $80,000 worth of technology out of the budget, and we put it into this debt exclusion. If it doesn't pass, those materials will not be bought. Article 26, to see if we threw a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override, a sum of money to avoid teacher layoffs. That sum of money is $780,000. That money, if that is voted through a Prop 2 and 1/2 override, will only go to replace classroom teachers. If that money is not appropriated, then 19 and 1/2 positions or 20 positions, classroom positions will be eliminated, class size will increase. This slide shows the articles that we have before you for debt exclusions and what they're for. Transportation has been talked about at town meeting for the last three years, and I know many of you have been hearing about it much longer than that. So, within this budget, we have to replace four vehicles. To buy four new buses at $90,000 apiece is $360,000. If you have a house that is appraised at $230,000, which is the median price of a house appraisal in Wareham, that will cost you $4.90 per year for five years. A debt exclusion, when it's paid off, it goes away. Article 19, high school roof. Um, some of you coming in tonight might have seen the pictures on the storyboard with the principal and the custodian, athletic director, right here. Um, up on this roof, we had to put a tarp, um, so that we would not have the water leaking into the gymnasium, which was a safety issue. In actuality, the entire roof needs to be done. The building is 23 years old. Um, it's a shame that that's all it lasted, but we're only asking for this part because it's a safety issue, and we will write a grant and try to come back at another time for the remainder of the roof that we will get reimbursement for. But that's a safety issue. So that's $110,000. That, for that same assessed median house, $1.50 per year for five years, and then it goes away. Sorry, that's not my music. Article 20, um, you've already seen, that was the educational materials, the textbooks, and the technology, $341,000. That, for that median-priced assessed house, $4.64 per year for five years. Feasibility study. A lot of people, I've heard, say, why do we need to study? We know we need to replace the building. Because the state group, the Mass School Building Authority, that is going to reimburse us somewhere between 60 and 70% of what we spend, says you have to start with a feasibility study. Part of that is hiring an architect. Part of that is doing studies of the site to make sure that the site that we have is appropriate and that there aren't things there that we don't know about. In previous times, when they did not have feasibility studies, some communities tried to build in locations, then found that there were hazardous materials there, adding millions of dollars to the cost of the project. So, by doing the feasibility study and having the studies done, we are assured that when the price comes in, it is the price that it will be. And you have a set of plans at the end of the day that have been agreed to by the Mass School Building Authority, and they will set the percentage. So before we come to you and say, we have a $23 million project and it's going to cost you $8 million, we will know exactly what the project looks like, what it entails, and so forth. All of that is done as part of this feasibility study. It is expensive, $575,000, but we do get at least 60% of it back. So the real cost to that median assessed house is $3.19 per year for five years. The total, $1,386,000 is what we are asking for through debt exclusions, and each of these will be voted on separately this evening. And we will have time to debate them as we come, and that total for the five years is an increase in your taxes of $14.23 for that $230,000 home. Now, thank you. Um, that just shows also in the high school where the water damage is coming through. We have peeling paint continuing. And this is Minet Forest. We'll go through some of the pictures quickly, please. Um, this shows you, um, a lot of the materials that are in the classroom. Um, here we have art on a cart because we don't have a classroom for the art teacher, so she has to bring her materials from room to room. This is the coat closet. Notice that the two doors in the middle are missing because when this building was built, um, the ventilation system was built into that closet. So, in order to make sure we have proper airflow, we had to take the doors down. This is something that if you are in a wheelchair, only part of the building is accessible by the elevator. The other one has to use this chairlift, and, um, that design regularly breaks down and costs an awful lot to maintain with, um, its battery life and so forth. And, um, a renovated building, we will be gone with this, and we will have the right accessibility in all sections of the building. Uh, this is the only computer lab at Minet Forest. Um, it actually looks big in this picture. If you were at the school, you would know how small it is, how hot that room gets, and the fact there, I believe somewhere in the corner, there may be a window air conditioner that had to be put in, uh, to keep the temperature so that the machines won't burn out. The 30-year-old portable that was talked about, um, because when it's very cold out, the heat is not sufficient. That is an electric heater that was put in to keep that space warmer. We all know that it, that is a very inefficient way, uh, to heat a space. Here is a crack in the gymnasium wall. That is, um, the classrooms back in 1960 when they were built only had two outlets. One of them was placed right above the sink. Um, if you know anything about code, that's not a place to have an electric outlet. So that had to be capped over, and now teachers only have one outlet in a classroom, and unfortunately, we have wires going from that one to computers and everything else. An unsafe situation. So, Minet Forest, um, to me, this is an investment in our community. Um, I think we proved with the middle school project that the building looks 1,000 times better than it did. Uh, it's holding up well, and in fact, this building is holding up well because the community members that are on the building committees make sure that we get the best that we can for our dollar. Um, I know the roof is leaking, but the rest of this building is in good shape. That is a, uh, an office space that was a, um, in the, off the gymnasium, it was the old shower room, uh, in that building, and now we're using it, um, for two of our teachers to meet with other teachers. This is a space shared by about three or four different staff. Original, um, gas burners. We, we did convert to gas, but those are the original burners. Uh, this is Mrs. Seaman's office, and we have plastic over the windows because the frost coming through that single-pane glass was such that her computer, um, we lost a hard drive because it got so cold in that office. That's the portable classroom. You can see across the bottom, um, that the floor is beginning to, uh, degenerate. Uh, this shows, um, the hallway, also the wall. This is the, if you've walked into the front of Minet Forest, this is where our office space is. Those are the mailboxes, workspace for teachers. Uh, this is one of our other specialist teachers that also has her class on a cart. Thank you. And this slide shows why do we need four buses. Well, um, my car is 10 years old. I believe in keeping things and trying to be frugal, but these are the, the actual vehicles that are on the road. So, we have one 15-years-old, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight at 13-years-old. We're not asking for all of them. We're asking for four this evening. The operational override, um, that's $780,000. That is the number that we are asking for. That, for that same $230,000 assessed house, will cost $53.04 a year or $1.02 per week in increased taxes. Now, that does not disappear because those 20 teachers still need to be there, and if this money disappears, then those positions disappear. So the total cost, the debt exclusion, $14.23 per cost per year or $0.27 per week. Operational override, $53.04 per year or $1.02 per week. The total is $67.27 per year or $1.29 per year. I am not here thinking that people on fixed incomes, that this is easy to come up with this money, but there was no other way to find the money. We cut our budget as we were asked to below funding from last year. So the only way that we can get additional revenue is this, through this method. This shows the, um, everybody's heard about the MCAS testing, and when I talk about the achievement gap, this is what we have. The state is in the dark blue in English. The light blue is Wareham. You can see that we approached it. Now we're falling, and the gap is increasing. In mathematics, which is the red and the orange, um, the state has gone up, Wareham has gone up, but the gap remains. If our students could be competitive with the rest of Massachusetts, then we need to fund like the rest of Massachusetts. Wareham versus the state average. So, each year from 1993 through 2011, this shows what the average spending above or below the minimum net, in other words, the absolute lowest that the town can give by law, and the percent above it. The average in 2011 was 13% above. We were 3% above. That is a 10% difference. 10% on a $30 million budget is $3 million. A lot of services can be provided with $3 million. So, so far, what we've had to do, we took our, the number that we had, we cut it by Article 20, the, um, textbooks, materials, we cut it by the, um, teachers, and we came down and we cut it by $1,121,000, down to $26,74,370. The, um, TA's budget was $25,3,019. That gave us still a shortfall of $1,41,351 to cut. And the way we got there is to get rid of most of the new programs that we built into that budget under the need-based, the $86,000 for additional MCAS remediation for, um, for non-low income, because low-income students, because of the way grants are funded, have first access to that tutoring under Title I. This money was going to be for non-low-income folks. Hard-working people that can't afford to send their children for extra tutoring and pay, um, but they're not considered low-income. That had to be cut. $25,000 for what we have had, which was the free summer school at the middle school. Additional staff, that was new staff that principals said they needed here at the high school. They were looking for two additional staff, and that's gone, $145,000. We looked at approximately 10% of our custodial service line item, $59,000. Secretarial cost, $38,000. Administrative cost, $148,000. Substitute miscellaneous, $60,000. We took, some people say, okay, you've got some people retiring. What about the savings? We've taken it, $114,395. That came up to $676,135. So we took the number that we needed to get to, subtracted it. The deficit still needing to cut, $366,216. Now, the following things are possible places where that money will come from. There will be a long workshop evening among the school committee, coming up with exactly where that money will come from. But some of the places that it could come from is extracurricular activities, sports, instructional leaders, cooperative school. These just show you the total cost of those programs. So the entire sports program within the budget is $310,125. We're not saying that that's where it's going to come from, but that is one place that we could look at. We could look at, for instance, freshman sports to come up with maybe $25,000. We could look at some of the instructional leaders and come up with $35,000. We could come up with a portion of the cooperative school. So those are all potential places we will, will find the rest of that money to make up that difference in the deficit of $366,216. This is just a four-year general comparison of the town side, general town side versus school system, net school spending. And over the last four years, the average spending from the town side was 2.25%. The school system side was 1.25%. Neither side of government has been overspending. As people before me have said, what we have is a revenue problem, not an expense problem. And this evening before you, there will be ways to generate increased revenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Rabinovich.
Madam Moderator, this is Deputy Moderator exercising overflow mic check.
Thank you, Joe. We're receiving you. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for understanding the issue that we have with an overflow crowd. Thank you, Joe. We'll keep in touch. Are there any other reports? I don't believe there's any other committees. Anyone that has given a re-
Some moderator?
Just one second. Anyone else that has any reports or has given a report, make sure you get one to the town clerk on my left.
Capital planning?
Capital planning, Mr. Jabertie.
I'm gonna try to keep, I'm gonna try to keep this real short. Is this working?
Yes. Just, you're gonna have to get real close to it. Up close and friendly.
Okay. For those of you that are unsure of what capital planning committee is or does, I'd like to take a minute to briefly explain. The capital planning committee was established under the charter to advise the town administrator on recommended capital purchases for both assets and improvements. Assets are those items with a life over two years and a cost in excess of $3,000. Improvements are defined as the construction, renovation, or improvement of all buildings and grounds, the cost of which exceeds $50,000. Sewer or storm water construction projects, the cost of which exceeds $50,000. All new vehicles, all non-vehicular equipment, the cost of which exceeds $25,000. And the acquisition of real estate, the cost of which exceeds $25,000. A couple of the improvements that are pending for us include, as Barry mentioned, a new roof for the high school gym, the $350,000, as well as the potential renovation or replacement of the Minnetonka Forest school. With a 48% potential reimbursement from the state, our portion would be approximately $13.5 million. Depending on many different factors, the state funding could be as much as 60 to 70%. The conservative estimate has been 48. The capital needs for the town are still growing as we've been unable to follow the plan presented previously. This year, the capital planning committee has requested two articles totaling $149,66. These are not for new expenditures, only payment on debt of 12 police cruisers presently in the system. We were originally contemplating an additional expenditure of $382,000, which would have included a much-needed ambulance. However, that disappeared. As you can see on the screen, the five-year listing of capital improvements is daunting. A way will have to be identified to practically address these needs. Otherwise, we may receive help from an outside source that will not necessarily be to our liking. You've been through that situation before. Last year, a skater system was discussed for the sewer department. This system would have paid for itself in less than two years and produced a positive cash flow. Presently, we still have been unable to afford it. Again, like a broken record, school buses are on the horizon. This is a discussion that has been going on forever without a positive resolution. Many Band-Aids have been used, but no resolution. School bus purchases should be reviewed by the capital planning committee for intelligent inclusion into the overall capital plan. However, the situation has reached the stage where the school committee has been forced to submit a warrant article for debt exclusion to purchase buses. Your vote on these warrant articles will determine what course you want for Wareham's future. Fall town meeting will be the time we know what our free cash situation is, and more importantly, a true picture of Wareham's financial position. CPC will continue to attempt to provide a workable plan for capital expenditures going forward. Due to budgetary constraints, our capital request will have to wait for a future town meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jabertie.
And for, can I just make one quick comment?
Sure.
We have an opening on the committee if anybody wants to join the fray.
Thank you, Mr. Jabertie. Ladies and gentlemen, I have one more indulgence that I would like to ask the body for. And that's to go to Article 7, which is the Upper Cape Regional Vocational School Budget. Superintendent Kevin Farr has to attend all five town meetings of the five participating schools that are in the regional district. And I would like to offer him the opportunity for us to take this article tonight so that he can attend the meetings of the other towns as well. If I hear no objections, I will move forward with Article 7. Hearing none, may I have a motion on Article 7? Will let the finance committee make the motions, please.
I move that the town raise and appropriate $2,595,519 and no sense as its share of the operating and capital costs of the Upper Cape Cod Regional Vocational Technical High School District for the fiscal year July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Superintendent Farr, just speak to the article, please.
Good evening, everyone. And I'd just like to start by saying that I'll miss you all because after 33 years of teaching and administering at Upper Cape Tech, I'll be retiring at the end of this coming school year. And I leave with a heavy heart. I have enjoyed every bit of it. And I've had many, many great friends from the town of Wareham that I will have for the rest of my life. And hopefully, I'll be seeing you in the future. In regards to tonight's budget request, 225 of Upper Cape Tech, 662 students come and reside from the town of Wareham. Based on the funding formula and based on the operational and capital costs, we come to you once per year at the spring town meeting. By statute, we cannot come to you at the fall town meeting. We have to make do with whatever funding that we obtained from our five sending communities at the spring town meeting. Falmouth has passed our budget. They have 199 students, and their budget request is over $3 million because it's based upon the state's funding formula. On May 7, we will be at the Wareham, I'm sorry, at the Sandwich and the Bourn Town meetings simultaneously. And later on in the month of May, finally at the town of Marion. If we have four of the five towns say yes, then we have a budget. If two of the towns say no, then basically, my committee, the nine-member regional school district committee that governs our school, would have to relook at the budget. They may even reduce it slightly or maybe do nothing at all, which then would require that the towns that voted no in that case would then have to hold a special town meeting before June 30. So those are the facts based on statute. Some of the other facts, and an introduction which I've been waiting all spring to make, is our school committee has had the foresight to not spend money on a worldwide search for the next superintendent. The gentleman that I handpicked as my assistant principal in 2004, now the principal, will be your next superintendent at Upper Cape Tech. And he's gonna give you a few more facts about our budget. Mr. Robert Dutch.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. I don't want to take too much of your time. And in listening to Dr. Rabinovich's presentation, I understand and appreciate the plight of the Wareham schools. But with that said, I wanted to reemphasize a point that Mr. Farr had mentioned. You see a 2.5 or almost $2.6 million request for 225 students in comparison to Falmouth as an example, which is over $3 million for 199 students. When you begin to do some comparisons and look at per pupil expenditures, and you look at Wareham's per pupil expenditure at $11,582, and you look at Wareham's cost to send students to Upper Cape Tech, it's also $11,535. Although we spend more per student, the cost to Wareham is decreased because of the Chapter 70 funding that comes to the town of Wareham or for the Wareham students to Upper Cape Tech. So with that said, I know that we don't need to sell you on the quality of the education that we provide or the services that we provide to the town. I know that you all understand that. We ask that you support your students who are at Upper Cape Tech equally as you do your students in Wareham at an equal cost. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a report of the Board of Selectmen, please? Your vote?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 3-0-0.
And may I have the vote and recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee voted favorable action 3-5-0, and a negative, if you will.
Thank you. Anything to be said on the question on my right?
Eddie Percivich, Precinct 1. Just a couple of questions. Dr. Farr, what is the percentage of the increase you're asking? And dollar-wise, how much is it over last year?
To answer the question?
Our overall budget is a 3.2% increase. To the town of Wareham, it's approximately $100,000 more. Overall, it's $366,000 more than last year.
And it's a 3 point, did you say 3.2?
3.2.
I thought at the finance committee, you were looking for a 7.2%.
No, that's the Wareham budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman on my left?
Madam Moderator, could I have a point of information before I speak to an amendment that I'm going to propose?
Sure. If you state your name first and then state your point.
My name is Cliff Sylvia.
Thank you.
And I'm on the Wareham School Committee, but I'm just speaking as a private citizen today.
Could you speak right into the microphone, please?
My name is Cliff Sylvia, Precinct 1, member of the Wareham School Committee, but I'm just speaking today as an individual citizen. Madam Moderator, I would like to propose an amendment to reduce this figure. I have a lot of good friends at Upper Cape. And I believe in technical and vocational education.
Would you just state your point of information?
My point of information is this. If I, my intent is to put the difference of this reduction, would it automatically go into free cash or would it have to be stated as part of the amendment?
Town council to answer the question. Mr. Farr, would you like to answer the question?
I could add something that any number of others that the number that's been approved by the Upper Cape Cod Regional School Committee that you all duly elected, any number under that number is ultimately a no vote to the town of Wareham in my process.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Sylvia, or would you like to come up here?
I didn't get the answer for free cash.
Okay. To answer the question? Town council?
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. If the body appropriated an amount less than is requested here, any balance would go into free cash.
Thank you.
Then, Madam Moderator, I would like to propose an amendment and speak to the amendment.
I will ask for your amendment. And I would also ask that you put it in writing.
I have it in writing. I propose, Madam Moderator, to amend Article 7. And I move to reduce the Upper Cape Cod Vocational Technical School budget allocation from $2,595,519 to $2,375,173. And that is level funded.
Do I have a second? I have a second to speak to your amendment, Mr. Sylvia?
Yes, Madam Moderator. I have mixed emotions about this because I am a believer in education. I am a believer in vocational education. And, but for me, it's a matter of equity. And I just don't feel at this point in time that to get a 3 or 4% increase while every other department has taken massive cuts, and the school department has been, our school department budget has been decreased by a quarter of a million dollars, less than level funded for last year. I suspect that Upper Cape could manage very well with a level-funded budget. Now, I understand full well that the other towns have to approve this because it basically is an assessment. And I understand full well that at some point in time, we may have to pay the $2,595. But I think that this, this has to be said, that there has not been equity. And there hasn't been equity in terms of comparing the two school districts. I believe that over the last 10 years, the Wareham School Department has gone up an average of 1.8% on their budget, whereas the Upper Cape has gone up 4.9%. It's a matter of equity for me, Madam Moderator and ladies and gentlemen. It's a matter of equity. We have, we continue to make cuts. We continue to have to function in a school department without the basic, without the basic tools to do the job. Ladies and gentlemen, yes, we have many of our kids being serviced and serviced very well at Upper Cape. However, 10 years ago, we had 243 kids at Upper Cape. Today, we have 225. In 2007, ladies and gentlemen, we had an increase of almost 5%, and we had 181 kids at Upper Cape. So if you do the math, you know that as the budgets have gone up, our kids going to Upper Cape has gone down. And it's going up since 2007, but it still has not reached the level of 2003. I feel very guilty making this speech. And I know that I'm probably losing some friends down at Upper Cape. But ladies and gentlemen, I just think it's a matter of principle. And for me, the principle is that we have to have an equitable perspective on the budget. And for my, for my- And from my, from where I sit, and being on the Wareham School Committee for as long as I've been, that there hasn't been equity. We have been struggling to make do with much, much less. And I just think at this point in time, given the dire needs that the town is in, that a level funded budget for Upper Cape is not unreasonable. Thank you, Miss, Madam Moderator. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please. Please, we will not have any applause after a speaker has spoken. We have a motion before us by Mr. Sylvia to reduce the Upper Cape Cod Vocational Technical School budget allocation from $2,595,519 to $2,375,173. Now, you also heard Mr. Farr, um, answer the question, uh, what the result of doing this would be. Is there anything to be said on Mr. Sylvia's amendment? On my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Brenda Ekstrom. While I can appreciate, uh, Mr. Sylvia's comments and sentiments, one thing that struck me is that with the number of students that go to the Upper Cape Technical School, um, it comes out to under $12,000 per student that Wareham is paying. And if you look at all the school districts throughout the state, Upper Cape is one of the low, albeit it is very expensive per pupil, but it is one of the lower-cost technical schools in the state. And while I, while I share his concerns, I would just wonder, would the Wareham School Committee be prepared to go with their price of $11,300 per student rather than the $12,300 that we spend right now? I think that if there's an issue and we have no one going there, or whatever, certainly in the future, we can try to go after the money. But I think right now, where we have, other towns are actually paying for our students to get this education, I think it's foolish for us to change it. Thank you.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, please, please, please hold your applause. Um, is there anything to, else to be said on Mr. Sylvia's motion? On my left, Mr. Duff?
I'd just like to clarify a couple of the points, um, that Mrs. Ekstrom made. Uh, the first is that the per pupil cost for Wareham is $11,535, which is about $80 less than the Wareham per pupil expense. So we are, we are pretty close in the ballpark, and yes, our actual per pupil is $14,900, which is higher than the Wareham School District, but that's subsidized by the other towns and Chapter 70 funds. Secondly, uh, she made a point that Upper Cape is one of the least expensive regional technical schools, when in fact, we are the second least expensive. There is only one other regional technical school that has a lower per pupil expenditure, and that's Essex Agricultural in, uh, Manchester, Massachusetts. So you are, as you know, getting a great deal for your investment, and I'd ask that you reconsider our original budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Mr. Sylvia's amendment? Seeing nothing further to be said, I will now call for a vote on Mr. Sylvia's motion, uh, to the amendment, the amendment to the motion. This would require a majority vote. I will read Mr. Sylvia's amendment. I move to reduce the Upper Cape Cod Vocational Technical School budget allocation from $2,595,519 The vote now comes on the amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Mr. Sylvia's motion passes. If I have seven people stand, we'll take a hand count.
Madam Moderator, can we have a hand count, please?
I have, I need seven people. One, two, three. We have seven people that questioned the vote. Tellers, will you please come forward? Ladies and gentlemen, the tellers will now take a hand count. Please hold your cards up high. Um, Mr. Ashley in the overflow room, if you have any registered voters, we will need you to also take a count. All those in favor of Mr. Sylvia's motion, please raise your cards and hold them up Section 2?
Uh, 44.
Section 2, 44. Section 3? Section 3, 126. Section 4? Section 4, 79. And the overflow? We have 308 in the affirmative. All those opposed to Mr. Sylvia's motion, uh, amendment, please raise your hands and hold your cards. Ladies and gentlemen, please keep your cards up until you've been asked to put them down. Pat, you've counted the second, yeah. We're in the middle of a count, just a second, Mr. Camerano. Section 1?
Section 142, 4-2.
Section 142. Section 2?
Uh, 47.
Section 2, 47. Section 3?
61.
Section 3, 61. Section 4?
28. 2-8.
28. In the overflow room?
3.
Overflow room 3. Here, 181 votes in the negative. Mr. Sylvia's amendment passes by a majority. The amendment now becomes the main motion. So we now will take a vote on the main motion as amended by Mr. Sylvia, which will be a reduction in the Upper Cape vocational budget. I will try for a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. The article passes by a majority. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the rest of our articles, we do by lottery, by chatter. There have been several questions asked as to how do we do the lottery? Uh, we do the lottery, uh, in between, as the article comes up, when we finish with one, um, the town clerk will pull a number, and that's when we know what article we're going to. Mr. Camerano, do you still have a point of order?
No, I have one question.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Article 51. May I, this is a petition article. Ladies and gentlemen, please, we have a very full crowd. In order to get through these articles, if we can keep the chatter, um, down, we can get through and move along. Uh, Article 51 is a petition article. The petitioner will make the motion. Mrs. Ekstrom?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to move that the town repeal Article 5, Section 580, wind facilities, wind energy facilities in its entirety as written in the warrant.
We have a motion and a second. To speak to your article, Mrs. Ekstrom?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If the body may remember, uh, at the last town meeting, this, um, article was submitted as Mr. Chabino spoke earlier to, with a study committee attached to it. Um, it passed at town meeting, it was even called back for reconsideration, reconsideration the next night for clarification, um, and the body, um, still favored repealing it. The main reason why that the repeal, this isn't to speak in favor or against wind turbines, um, but the bylaw that we have in place right now is antiquated, it is, um, archaic almost by the technologies of today. Uh, the last article that we had, we actually had the sub, uh, the study committee formed, they have, um, as earlier, they presented it, they have it in writing, and then it would be up to the zoning board, planning board, or Board of Selectmen if they wanted to go forward to write a new one. The reason why this failed at the Attorney General's office is because if you're going to repeal a zoning bylaw, it, you're required to notify all abutting towns by registered letter. There was a, an error in the planning board, planning department, that wasn't done. Every other abutting community except Carver, um, did not object to it. Uh, Carver objected to it, saying that they weren't aware of it, and they objected to us repealing our bylaw. Um, so I would just like to ask everyone's support, as we had it last time, to repeal this, to have, uh, so that we can have a committee made up to write a bylaw that will be advantageous, if that's what we choose, but will be advantageous to the citizens in the town, as well as, um, all of the issues, so, you know, to address all the issues that were brought up earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ekstrom. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 1, 4, 2 against.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Finance Committee and the recommendation?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted 0 for, 8 against, no abstentions.
Thank you. Uh, this is a repeal of the zoning bylaw, and therefore, uh, we need to know whether the planning board had a hearing, and when they had their hearing, and the recommendation of the planning board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. George Barrett, Chairman of the Planning Board. Uh, Planning Board held a public hearing on this article on April 18th. Uh, at that time, no one spoke in opposition to favorable action, and the planning board voted unanimously, unanimously to support this article. 5-0-0.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak to this article? The gentleman on my right? Mr. Campina?
Good evening, Madam Moderator. I, um, rise to, um, amend the article. I don't know if that's proper, I, I-
Could you speak right into the microphone?
My name is Guy Campina. Um, I'm in Precinct 3, and I move to amend the article. And, um, it's, I believe it's up on the board, so I'll read it. I move that the Wind Energy Facility zoning bylaw, Article 5, including 580 through 580, 5 dot 13, as up there, um, uh, remain as written. I move that 582 be amended to read, "A wind facility may be erected by special permit subject to environmental design conditions on land owned by the town of Wareham, which contains a minimum of 5 acres. The SBGA, Special Permitting, Permit Granting Authority, may allow more than one wind turbine if it determines that the location is favorable to the clustering of wind turbines. Further, a committee shall be established to rewrite the wind bylaws, 580 through 585 dot 13, that may or may not be more in line with the findings of the Wind Review Committee." The appointing authority for this committee shall be two members from the Board of Selectmen, two members from the planning zoning, and, and the moderator.
Second.
I have a second. Uh, Mr. Campina, I just have one question for you.
Yes.
In your motion, you want to establish a committee. Do you have a number of how many you want on that committee?
Well, I, I thought 7 would be a good number, but I was going to leave that up to the Board of Selectmen, uh, up to the zoning, planning and zoning, and the moderator to figure out what that committee should be. Um, that was my intent, but if you need a number, I would pick 7.
Okay. And to speak to your amendment, please?
Well, it, it speaks for itself. I, I agree with, um, the provisions or the, the, um, the principle of repealing it is to make some bylaws that may speak to, um, uh, some things that have been raised for concern. I, I agree with that. Um, but my opinion is that if we continue to do business for the town of Wareham, we have a project in place to allow that to continue, um, and let it fail or pass on its own merits, at the same time, appoint a committee to make the revisions needed, uh, to address wind turbines in the future for the town of Wareham, and maybe in the present, uh, future to include, uh, private landowners. Uh, specifically, I removed private landowners because that was a concern, and, um, and that's the intent, uh, to not stop progress what we're doing now, and to provide for a committee to really give it some study. And we just had a great report by the last committee, and they made some interesting and some really good points. I think we should follow up on that, uh, vet them a little bit more, and make a, a bylaw that would be more appropriate for today's time.
Thank you. If I just could understand this correctly so that I understand, the amendment that you're making will keep in place all of those sections, but will eliminate or will amend Section 582 that would only allow wind turbines to be put on town-owned property?
Yes, ma'am. Municipal property. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Just wanted to be clear. Is there anything further that you would like to say to your amendment?
No, ma'am. I, I just think it speaks for itself. I, I, I think I've said all I can say, and, uh, we'll let the body decide as to where we should go with it.
Okay. We have Mr. Campina's amendment before us. Uh, to speak to the amendment, on my right?
Thank you, Brenda Ekstrom, again. Madam Moderator, I'd like to, through you to the body, I would like to ask to repeal this amendment. There's a couple of flaws with the amendment. Number one is that I don't believe, and council can confirm this, but I don't believe that you can grant, um, special zoning issues for the town that you don't allow for private. As a matter of fact, I think if I remember correctly back-
to address wind turbines in the future for the town of Wareham, and maybe in the future to include private landowners. Specifically, I removed private landowners, because that was a concern. And that's the intent, to not stop progress that we're doing now, and to provide for a committee to really give it some study. And we just had a great report by the last committee, and they made some interesting and some really good points. I think we should follow up on that, vet them a little bit more, and make a bylaw that would be more appropriate for today's time.
Thank you. If I just could understand this correctly, so that I understand, the amendment that you're making will keep in place all of those sections, but will eliminate, or will amend, section five-eighty-two that would only allow wind turbines to be put on town-owned property?
Yes, ma'am. Municipal property. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Just wanted to be clear. Is there anything further that you would like to say to your amendment?
No, ma'am. I just think it speaks for itself. I think I've said all I can say, and we'll let the body decide as to where we should go with it.
Okay. We have Mr. Campina's amendment before us. To speak to the amendment, on my right?
Thank you, Brenda Ekstrom-McKen. Madam Moderator, I'd like to, through you to the body, I would like to ask to repeal this amendment. There's a couple of flaws with the amendment. Number one is that I don't believe, and counsel can confirm this, but I don't believe that you can grant special zoning issues for the town that you don't allow for private. As a matter of fact, I think if I remember correctly, back in 2006, that was one of the issues, when the school department was the one that brought this zoning bylaw forward, because they wanted to do one on the school grounds. And then, through their research, they found out that it had to be allowed broader-based. Number one. Number two, this is amending a zoning bylaw. I would think that if you're amending a zoning bylaw, as I had to go to the planning board and have a public hearing, I would think that to amend this, you would also have to have a public hearing on it. This, the first I've heard of this was today. And thirdly, while I can appreciate Mr. Campina's attention to trying to save money, he is the director of the Water Pollution Control Facility. And I was on the Board of Selectmen when the Board of Selectmen had him, or had the director at the time, do a wind study. There was no definitive whether we were going to do it or not. Now, this body has voted to get a board of sewer commissioners. We are waiting for them. But I think that before such a major step is taken by a head of a department, that I think that the sewer commissioners that this body voted for to be in place are in place to make that decision. And there are hundreds of people that live in that neighborhood that have had issues with the smell of the plant, and while I know that things have been done to address that, before we get the answers...
About twenty seconds.
Thank you. Before we get the answers, before we get the answers to, or get a bylaw written, I think that it would be in not the best interest of those neighbors of ours to allow them to have this put up, and then have it refused by any and every other area in town. Thank you.
Selectmen, vaguely, to speak to the merits of the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It's on. Don't tap it. Put it right up close. Nope. How about now?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I asked this body to defeat this amendment. Dissecting the bylaw, and I have to agree with the previous speaker, that there was not a public hearing on this. We already have a wind study committee. We heard from Mr. Chabino on their behalf. And we're going to have another committee? Let's, I urge those folks to please defeat this amendment and support the original amendment. We need to, we look at all of this. Again, we have to look at how this is going to impact all the different people that will definitely be affected by this. Particularly with the Water Pollution Control Facility, I have some real concerns. People in that neighborhood have been plagued by issues from the Water Pollution Control Facility with odor issues, and I don't think that that particular neighborhood wants to be saddled with wind turbines as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman on my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Heaney, Precinct One. I have a question, and maybe it's a question for, through you, Madam Moderator, to Town Council. But if we repeal bylaw, doesn't that mean that we have no rules for or against a particular project, and therefore, it's okay to build a wind turbine anywhere?
To answer the question? Town Council will attempt to answer it?
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. The general rule under zoning is that unless an activity is specifically allowed in the zoning bylaw, it's deemed to be prohibited. So the absence of language that would permit windmills, wind power, would mean that it would be prohibited in town?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said? On my right?
Yeah. Lynn Barrows, Precinct Five. I'm hearing from the woman who brought forth the article that, I don't know, it's not true, whatever his question is, it's...
Mrs. Barrows, to speak to the amendment on Mr. Campina's amendment, please?
Okay. Some of you might know me as doing some studies, especially on the medical implications of wind energy. In the earlier presentation by the Wind Commission, I was disappointed that, under some of the medical issues, that seizures weren't included with that. When it came to house values, there was also a comment made that house values, there's no proof of impact by that. And that's not true. In my studies in both wind turbines in Maine and in the Adirondacks, there was significant damage to home values. Now, one of the things that I'm concerned about, and that I've been hearing about, is in regard to wind coming to town, is as the selectmen just mentioned, up at the sewer, and putting one up there. And I agree that it is unfair to those residents. We still haven't kept it. There's raw sewerage around the sewer building, and these people have to smell it. So if any would like to go down...
Mrs. Barrows, if you could stay to the point of the amendment?
Well, ma'am, this is where they're talking about putting in a wind energy facility, I'm sorry, a wind turbine. And so that is directly related to what happens with this article, whether or not a wind turbine goes in there, ma'am. So with all due respect, I do believe it's appropriate. I found myself at Shores one day.
About twenty seconds.
Thank you. Stop and shop. And the director of that department, the sewer department, was there with a wind energy owner. And that wind energy person, by the end of the conversation, because I explained all the medical problems in my family, quietly asked me to not let any of his know that he offered me a bribe to move out of town. He was going to buy me a house.
Mrs. Barrows? Mr. Percevich, on my right?
That's a tough act to pull.
Ladies and gentlemen? Ladies and gentlemen, please, on my right, gentleman on my right, to speak to the amendment?
Eddie Percevich, Precinct One. The Attorney General's Office negated or rejected our change last time when we addressed the wind energy bylaw, because we didn't follow procedures. Now we're trying to amend that wind bylaw, and my question, hopefully from Town Council, is, is this following procedure because this was not brought up at the planning board for a change in the zoning bylaws? I thought they're supposed to have a public meeting prior to coming here, and that they're supposed to vote on the zoning change bylaw. Nobody here said that this was brought up to the planning board, nor was it voted on before it came to town meeting. So if we could get a ruling, please, from Town Council regarding the procedures for this?
I believe, Mr. Percevich, to answer your question, that would be one of the issues that the Attorney General would look at and would make a decision on. And if they felt that it was not properly handled, then they would send it back.
Madam Moderator, if we could get a ruling, please. It's foolish to put this all the way through and have the Attorney General's Office reject it. We know what the procedures are to change the zoning bylaw. Does this follow the procedures that are required? It's a simple yes or no.
To answer the question?
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. I wish it were as simple as a yes or no. Anytime a zoning article comes before town meeting, any proposal for zoning, you are allowed to make amendments to that proposal as long as the amendments are within the scope of the article. So the first question that has to be dealt with is whether Mr. Campina's amendment is within the scope of the article. And at this point, I hope you forgive me for having gone to Jesuit schools, because this will sound a little Jesuit-ical. Well, some of you got the joke. The bylaw, the article on the warrant calls for the repeal of the bylaw in its entirety, which would, as I indicated, Mr. Heaney, would prohibit the construction of this type of facility anywhere in town. The amendment does something less than repeal it. It repeals this type of activity for most of the town. In fact, for all of the town, except for publicly-owned property. So, again, taking the Jesuit-ical approach, is it within the scope of an article to allow something that's almost an entire repeal, where the article itself calls for a complete repeal? Honestly, I think it's a close call. Fortunately, and I get to point over to Madam Moderator and say, under Chapter thirty-nine, Section fifteen, it's Madam Moderator's call. But if I were making the call, as I am in fact the moderator in my own town, I would say it is within the scope of the article, because the outer, it's like Russian dolls. As long as the smaller dolls, the amendments fit inside the bigger doll, then it's within the scope of the article. And here, the big doll is a complete repeal. This amendment is a smaller doll, a partial repeal, an almost complete repeal. So I believe it's within the scope of the article, although the Attorney General will make her own ruling on that point. I've probably bored you enough.
I believe his question was, was proper procedure followed without a hearing?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'll try to make this part of the answer quicker. It's impossible for every zoning, every amendment that might be offered on the floor of town meeting to be vetted by the planning board before it comes to town meeting. It's just logistically impossible. It just doesn't happen. And so you cannot start from the assumption that a zoning proposal that comes before town meeting cannot be amended just because the amendment didn't come before the planning board for a hearing. So if that's the proposition, and I don't believe it is, then I disagree with it. So at some point, there is the question of how far may the amendment deviate from what the planning board heard before it's just so completely different than what the planning board heard? That gets back to the question of scope of the article, and whether the amendment is within the scope of the article. It's my opinion, anyway, that it is. Ultimately, my opinion, and with respect to Madam Moderator, who will offer her opinion, ultimately, our opinions will not matter. It will be up to the Attorney General to decide whether the proper procedure was followed.
Thank you.
Thank you. On my left?
Yes, Mary Scasiotti. I do sit on the Zoning Board of Appeals, but I'm actually speaking on my own personal opinion. It would be a very good idea to not vote in favor of this amendment. During the past year, we had the opportunity to listen to many, many hours of testimony for a particular wind project that was ultimately turned down by the Board of Appeals. We've learned so much more, and it really needs to go back to the study committee and allow them to really expand on what we've learned and what there is to know to make a better amendment to serve the town. So I would ask that you please deny or decline the amendment, and go back to the original request to abolish this bylaw and start over. Thank you.
Thank you. On my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jane Donahue, Precinct Three. Through you, Madam Moderator, to Town Council. I believe you stated that this article was basically the same article with just a smaller doll inside it. But this article that's up here before says that all of the rest of this will in fact not be repealed, that it will remain as written. And then it goes on to amend one section that will remain as written. So I'd like clarification on that, please, if I may.
Attorney Bowen?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. By changing the area described in, I believe it was, section five-eighty-two, which right now reads, I believe, something along the lines of all public, all private property and all public property. If you voted the article as originally proposed by Ms. Ekstrom, that would constitute a total repeal for all areas under five-eighty-two, both private and public. What is being done by this motion is it is allowing the repeal of these provisions for all private property. And because by subtracting private property from the allowed area, it repeals it for purposes of all private property, and it continues to allow it for all public property.
Well, sir, with all due respect, I would think it would say then, "I move that the wind energy facility zoning bylaw, blah, 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 is repealed except for five-eighty-two, which would be amended to read blah, 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 blah", which is not what it says. I would also just like to point out, if I may, that we voted to repeal this last time. It got thrown out by the Attorney General on a technicality. Let's repeal it. Let's start over again. Let's get the right wind energy that we need. The planning board voted unanimously in support of repealing it, five-zero-zero. It's archaic. It's old. Let's start over again. I was also on the Board of Selectmen when we looked at this wind turbine for the sewer compound, and we were told that there's not enough wind there. So, you know, we can look into that further. There's no real rush to put up a wind tower there. The neighbors came in and were very concerned about it, as they were in other parts of town. I encourage people to defeat this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. On my left?
Nancy Miller, Onset. I have a question. How many five-acre parcels does the town own? I don't know about you guys, but I know of one, and that's Loops Field in Onset. I would not be happy if the town decided to put all these turbines out at Loops Field, because there is over five acres out there, so they could do that. There's five acres where Town Hall sits with the schools. So it could be anywhere, anywhere that there's a five-acre parcel, we're giving the town permission to put up more than one wind turbine if it determines that the location is favorable? Maybe, will be, yeah. I would, please, let's give the committee that has already been established time to come up with a bylaw that we can discuss, because this is just carte blanche. They can do anything they want.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I would ask that if we have speakers at the microphone, please keep quiet and allow them to speak with no comments going on in the background. It's only common courtesy, and there is a rule that says no one will interrupt a person who is speaking. So I would ask that you have some respect when someone is at the microphone. Is there anything further to be said on the amendment? On my right?
Ms. Moderator, my name's Joe Mulcurran, Precinct Two. I'm also on the wind study committee. And we sat in many a meeting and discussed things. I knew nothing about wind turbines until I started getting books and reading the computers. And the thing is, the town should set the example. We shouldn't exempt the town, let them do exactly what they want. We should go by a bylaw, and everybody goes by it. And I also would like to make a motion to...
We have an amendment. There's no amendments to the amendment.
Okay, thank you. That's just my point of view. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Mr. Campina's amendment? Seeing no one else to speak, I will now call for a vote on Mr. Campina's amendment. Since it is only amendment, it does only require a majority vote. All those in favor of Mr. Campina's amendment, as it appears before you on the screen, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
The amendment fails. In the overflow room? Deputy Moderator, did you have in the affirmative and in the negative?
We did not have a vote in the...
Would you please take a vote?
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. All persons are no.
Thank you. Okay, we now have before us Article fifty-one, which is the main motion as presented by the petitioner. Now, this is a zoning bylaw change, and it will require a two-thirds vote. I am going to try for unanimous. I am going to try for unanimous. All those in favor of Mrs. Ekstrom's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Deputy Moderator, did you take account?
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. It is negative.
Article 51 passes by a two-thirds voice vote.
No, is it on? Is it on? Madam Moderator?
Mr. Camerano?
Yes, I move that the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of the following elective offices: town clerk, town moderator, and any other elective officers of the town as provided by Section 108, Chapter 41, general laws, as amended, and to raise and appropriate a sum of money as follows. Town clerk, $62,428.60. The registrar, $700. Town moderator, $118 per diem.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Is there anything to be said on Article 5? On my right?
Madam Moderator, Brenda Ekstrom, I'd like to amend the article. And I would like to have it to read, to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of the following elected offices: town clerk, $62,428.60; registrar, $700; Board of Selectmen, $500 each; town moderator and other elected offices, other elected offices of the town at zero, provided by Section 108, Chapter 41, general laws, as amended, and to raise and appropriate a sum of money therefore or to act in any manner thereof.
I have a second. Do I, may I have that in writing, please?
Do you want it right now?
Yes, please.
Or should I speak to it first? Thank you.
To speak to your amendment?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I was a member of the Board of Selectmen for six years. Since I have been gone, this is my second town meeting, and I will come back every year at town meeting to ask the Board, for the Board of Selectmen to get some type of stipend or compensation. It was suggested last year that we form a committee or that we give them a stipend out of the budget, and I think that what we really need to do is to say that driving to Town Hall two or three or four days a week, attending the meetings, sitting there until, well, when I first started, it was during a lot of construction, and I was at conservation and zoning some nights until 12:00, 12:30 with the other volunteer members. The Board of Selectmen deserve it. Now, most of you know that many of my political views are different from the, some of the selectmen we have sitting here, but I'm hoping that that in and of itself will allow everyone to realize that there, there should be some compensation for the efforts that they put in, whether you agree with them or not. And I understand that probably the arguments for years gone by of voting against it is because people didn't agree with me, and that's fine. But I hope that they will see past that and agree and, and vote for compensation for these ones. As far as the town moderator, with all due respect, you do a very good job, but out of anyone and everyone who is in control of their own per diem, it would be the town moderator. No offense to you personally. So I think that the town moderator, for, you know, six to eight days' worth of work a year in front of us, it probably goes with the same as the Finance Committee who's putting in time or any of the other elected officers, Board of Assessors, School Committee. And so I think that that should be nothing, but I do think the selectmen should get it something. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on the amendment? On my left?
Point of information, Irvin Russell, Precinct 6. Now, is, my understanding is that the amendment does not omit the moderator's per diem?
It changes the moderator to zero.
I'm in a perplexed situation here. I would...
Let me, wait, hang on, Mr., just hang on one second. Let me read the, the motion so that we're all clear. "To see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of the following elective officers: town clerk, $62,428.60; registrar, $700; Board of Selectmen, $500; town moderator and all other elected offices of the town at zero as provided by Section 108, Chapter 41, general laws, as amended, and to raise and appropriate a sum of money therefore or to act in any manner thereof." That's the most, that's the amendment that's before us.
Mrs. Moderator, through you to the body. I am totally in favor of compensating the Board of Selectmen for their services. Over the years, many years, I have been advocating that since the repeal of the, that stipend that was given to the Board of Selectmen by someone in our, of our member, a town committee or town meeting with regard to Joe Gracia, who was in a position to collect salary, well, collect the benefits, the health benefits and retirement benefits, but it was such a unique position, and that's why the stipend was taken away. And I would be wholeheartedly in, in favor of restoring the stipend to the Board of Selectmen. I am going to be one of the chief advocates for a new form of government here in this town. I mean, we, we need to move on to a mayoral form of government with a city council.
Mr., please stick to the amendment.
Okay, in the amendment, I believe that we need to compensate the Board of Selectmen for their efforts. I mean, it's ludicrous. I expect them to have their clothes clean, be presentable as representatives of this town, of this town and anywhere that they have to appear, you know, at their own expense. You know, and we're going to get what we pay for eventually, and if we pay them nothing, we'll get nothing.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Mrs. Moderator, I, I would want for the, the inclusion of the moderator's salary to be included, but I'm in favor of the amendment to, to pay the Board of Selectmen.
Point of order, Madam Moderator?
State your point.
In the past, amendments that have exceeded the scope of the article have not been allowed.
Mr. Barrett, the article is authorizing the establishment of salary levels, which are provided under Section 108, Chapter 41, and I believe that that would allow the inclusion of the Board of Selectmen as well. So it would be within the, the scope, and I will accept it.
Even though it has the potential of a $100,000-plus increase?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gentlemen on my left?
Hi, Steve Curry, Rose Point, Madam Moderator. The issue about change, turning the town moderator's salary down to zero because supposedly the moderator sets their own schedule for how many days they work. This town body actually sets that schedule for how many days the town moderator works by discussing the number of articles that are put on the warrant. If there was 10 articles on the warrant, the moderator would be paid for one day. We have 50 articles. We're looking to go for four days, five days. Last year, we had 90 articles. We went for seven or eight days just for one meeting. In preparation for town meeting, the town moderator has to work at least many days for the month before town meeting, going through the articles with town council. So the town moderator's time, preparation for town meeting is the same as the selectmen showing up for their meeting in preparation for their articles. So I do believe the moderator should be paid for her travel, her research, not her, but the moderator, in, in preparation for town meeting, just as the selectman or any other elected official might want to do. So to reduce that, I know I can't make an amendment to an amendment, but I believe the moderator should be compensated for their time because they do put in 10 to 12 meeting nights and then probably two months' worth of prep work in preparation for that. So I do believe the moderator should be compensated. Again, I can't make an amendment to this amendment without failing, so...
Thirty seconds.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen on my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Heaney, Precinct 1. Madam Moderator, I was always under the impression that if we added money to a budget, which is effectively what this art, amendment would do, it would add $2,500 to the budget, that there had to be a corresponding offset, and I didn't hear that in the origin, in the original budget, excuse me, in the original motion, or the amended motion. Is there an offset in the budget for this?
I'll have town council answer your question.
Madam Moderator, through you, the previous speaker. Prior to the 1990s, there was a custom among moderators to require someone adding an expense anywhere in the budget to subtract it out somewhere else. There was a case in the town of Hanson called Hanson versus Hanson Moderator, in which the courts said that that practice was improper. So we can no longer do that. But to touch on the central point, you could change the salary called for in Article 5 as you wish, and I believe one gentleman referenced $100,000, but unless you actually included an amount of money within the budget under Article 6 to fund these salaries, the fact that you might set them at a particular level would be just purely aspirational unless the money's there to pay it. So when you got to Article 6, if you were to vote $100,000 salary for someone, for example, unless that money were actually plugged into the budget, they're not going to get the $100,000.
So, so just a follow-up question. Are you suggesting that if, if we added $2,500 for the selectmen through Article 5's amendment, that unless that was put into the budget someplace, they don't get it?
Madam Moderator, through you, the previous speaker. That's correct. You know, although, just beware that you could have a line item that said personnel services, just do the math quickly, $15,000. You know, if the salary voted was less than $15,000, there's money there to pay it. You might not be able to pay for something else or some other salary. But ultimately, to fully fund any salary you vote, one way or another, you're going to have to put the money in for it to be funded.
So if I understand you correctly, that this, this amendment is moot until we talk about the budget article?
No.
Madam Moderator, through you, the previous speaker. Chapter 41, Section 108 requires a vote to actually establish the salaries. So we're complying with the statute when we act under Article 5. But your ability to actually pay for the salaries that you're set is going to be contingent on voting enough money under Article 6.
Okay, I think, thank you.
On my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Brenda Ekstrom. First of all, in the budget, there is a line item that says selectmen salaries. Granted, that has usually been used for the office, but I'm sure $2,500 can be found in that. Secondly, to one of the previous speakers, as many of you know, I just got elected onto the Board of Assessors. And while, again, this is not against Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee puts in hundreds of thousands of hours, most of the boards and committees put in hundreds of thousands of hours, and as a new assessor, I just received a copy of an email that I was told that I have to go for training and that it's going to cost approximately $500, and they don't have the money for it. So I have to take that out of my own pocket.
Mrs. Ekstrom, just to the amendment.
If I may, that's an elected, that's an elected position. So what I'm saying is that I was told that, and, and that's fine, as I paid for everything as a selectman. But what I'm saying is that many people put in time here. Many people put in hundreds of hours of time. So I, I think that the difference is, the selectmen, there is an expectation. People look to them, they blame them when there's something that's gone wrong that they have nothing to do with, and they, they don't give them any credit when they busted their chops to get something accomplished. They deserve it, and this is nothing to anyone else. This is for them, and as far as everyone else, it is, you know, you asked to do this. And I think that, like I said, if, if we can't come up with the money to put requirements in place, we shouldn't be giving out extra money. Thank you.
On my left?
Angela Dunham, Precinct 3. Madam Moderator, a question to town council, through you, please. I am, I have no qualm with the dedication and the time and work that the selectmen put into working for this town. However, I have a question about the salary. If the salary is paid from town, are they also entitled to insurance from the town?
To answer the question?
Madam Moderator, through the previous speaker. Madam Moderator, through the previous speaker, the question of insurance benefits is addressed by General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 2, Subsections A and D. Ordinarily, to be eligible for benefits, insurance benefits, you have to be a regular employee, which means that you must work for no less than 20 hours. There is an exception under subsection D for persons elected by popular, by popular vote, that they may be considered eligible employees during their entire term regardless of the number of hours worked. A determination as to eligibility is made by the, quote, "appropriate public authority." And under 32B, Section 2A, the appropriate public authority is defined as being in a town the Board of Selectmen. So... So I just wanted to take you through the law. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Mrs. Dunham?
Thank you.
I believe Mr. Sylvia was next. On my left?
Sylvia, Precinct 1. I guess, to build on the previous speaker, we really don't know the budgetary impact of this, this amendment. Given what town council has revealed to us just now, we're in a dark here because we have absolutely no clue as to what the real cost of this amendment would be, and I just ask the voting public to take that into consideration. I hate to vote on something and not know exactly what the budgetary impact's going to be. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. On my right?
Jeff Swett, Carmesid Road, District 1. Two points. One is, we do not lack a shortage of highly qualified people to run for the Board of Selectmen. So it's, it's clear that people are running for it without a stipend and will probably continue to run for it without a stipend. More importantly, and while I don't in any way, shape, or form question the good faith of the proponent of this amendment, part of the reason I love this community is the volunteerism. Every day, I am, I witness volunteerism as recently as putting up the playground at the Deacon's School, which was a marvelous event to see. I think people do things because they want to have a positive impact on their community. It has nothing to do with stipends, and I think we should support all these volunteers, but I don't think we need stipends to do it.
Ladies and gentlemen, is there anything further to be said on Mrs. Ekstrom's amendment? Seeing no one standing, the vote now will come on the amendment, which is to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of the following elective offices: town clerk, $62,428.60; registrar, $700... Town Clerk, $62,428.60; Register, $700; Board of Selectmen, $500; Town Moderator and all other elected offices of the town at zero as provided by Section 108, Chapter 41, General Laws, as amended. The vote now will come on the amendment. It only requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Deputy Moderator in the overflow room.
All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. There is no.
The amendment fails. We now have before us.
Madam Moderator.
On my right.
I'd like to introduce another amendment, please. Eddie Posevich, Precinct 1.
Please state your amendment.
The amendment, the article, remains the same except for the addition of a $500 stipend for the BOS, for the Board of Selectmen.
So your motion, your amendment, is exactly the same thing as Mrs. Exstrom, only it leaves the stipend for the moderator in place?
That's correct.
May I have that in writing, please? We have an amendment, and we have a second for, it's basically the same as the previous amendment, only instead of reducing the moderator, it leaves the moderators at 118. To speak to your amendment, Mr. Posevich.
Yes, I agree that the town moderator should have the $118 per diem, as I believe another speaker, it's previously stated. I also agree that, I believe, the Board of Selectmen should have a $500 stipend. So that's all I'm doing is to change that, just to add that the Board of Selectmen should have a $500 stipend. I think they use their own time, their own money, their own cell phones. They should get some type of a compensation, and a stipend doesn't qualify as a salary, I do believe. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Mr. Posevich's amendment? On my left.
Mrs. Moderator, Urban Russell, Precinct 6. And I am also in favor of this motion based on the fact that the stipend and with the sense of the committee, a sense of the committee that the benefits will not be paid in addition to this stipend, I think that they are very much deserving of this $500. And I should, I would ask everybody to vote in favor of this motion and finally compensate the selectmen.
Thank you. On the stage, Mr. McDonald.
Madam Moderator, just a point of clarification here. We are not, I mean, at this point, we have no idea if there's going to be benefits paid, correct? I mean, we can't say there's not going to be because, again, based on what we heard from town council, it's possible that benefits can be paid. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So to state otherwise is simply not true. Everybody that takes a job or everybody that applies for a committee or runs for office runs under the idea that they're not getting paid. And I'm not saying they don't do a wonderful job, but we've got a big budget problem, and right now, we're trying to solve a budget problem, and here we are talking about whether or not the Board of Selectmen gets paid. Much more important articles are coming up, and I think we need to just vote this, vote this down, go to the next article, and go from there.
Ladies and gentlemen, there will be no applause for any speakers, please. On my left.
Madam Moderator, I urge the defeat of this amendment. I think it should be taken up as a study by a committee in that the selectmen shouldn't be singled out for a raise this year and not have the assessors and the planning board and the school committee and many other elected officials be left out. This isn't the way it should be done. And secondly, I'd like to hear from the selectmen. Are they looking for a raise?
Sir, on my left, could you please just state your name for the record? On my left, please, sir. Could you just state your name for the record?
Bob Powell, Edith Cory Drive, Precinct 3.
Thank you. On my right.
Thank you. I believe, Brenda Exstrom, I believe that the amendment mentioned that it was a stipend. Secondly, I think that the selectmen, as I said, I sat there. You're not going to say, oh, yeah, I want the $500, but you know what? $4 a gallon of gas, and you're expected to, excuse me.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
You know what? If the school department or the employee, people here, you can just wait. We talk about this stuff every year.
Mrs. Exstrom. Hold, everybody, hold on. We're not going to have these outbursts. I realize the hour is getting late. I realize it's been a difficult night. There's been a lot of people in here. I am going to ask you to please, we're not going to have this. Mrs. Exstrom is speaking. I'm sure she will apologize for her outburst as well. Go ahead, Mrs. Exstrom.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and I will apologize to you in the body. But if I may just say, you are absolutely correct. Every time I've gotten up, it has been harassment. Now, as I said, it is a stipend. Secondly, I think that if any member of the Board of Selectmen voted to give themselves insurance, I think then you would see an uprising, you'd probably see a recall. So I don't think giving them a little extra money where, as I said, we're expecting, I know that, you know, a couple of them live, they've got to live at least 12 to 15 miles round trip from Town Hall. That's a gallon every day, I mean, a gallon every time. It doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're there three, four, or five times a week, it adds up. So I really, please support this amendment. Thank you.
Selectmen homes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Speaking for myself, I will just say this. When I decided to run for selectmen, the position was a voluntary position. So I knew what I was getting into. I knew that there was cost for gas, clothes, and other things. Thanks, Tedsy. But you know what? I signed up for it. And I don't know where this is coming from, but I can tell you that I'll be voting no, and I would ask you to support a no vote and leave the position voluntary the way it was when I ran for office. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Gentlemen on my left.
Bill Nazario, District 6, Shangri-La. You know, we're taking a lot of time on this, me personally, and I'm sure that the rest of the body would agree that we should move on. This is all about civic duty. You run for the office, you have an expectation of not getting paid, you're a volunteer, you know, it's understood. I have no qualm against, I mean, I believe that certain expenditures should be reimbursed, but, you know, it's been voted, it's been voted down already. Just asking to move on.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Mr. Posevich's motion? If not, I'll call for the vote on the motion, which is the same basically as Article 5, only that it would add a $500 stipend for the Board of Selectmen. This would require a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
In the overflow room, Mr. Deputy Moderator.
A no vote. That's a negative. They voted it down.
No vote, Joe? We have no votes down?
Vote is correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Posevich's motion fails by a majority. We now have before us Article 5 as it is in your warrant. The vote now will come on Article 5 to set the salaries for the town clerk, the registrar, and the town moderator as it appears in your warrant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 5 passes by a majority. Ladies and gentlemen, we're approaching the hour of 10 o'clock. We could take another article and continue to go beyond the hour, or I would accept a motion to adjourn until tomorrow night at 7:00.
So moved.
Please, someone needs to come to the microphone to make the motion. We don't just yell out.
So moved.
So moved what? Someone, please make a motion.
Madam Moderator. I move to adjourn to tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at the Wareham High School.
Thank you. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Hi, I'm Courtney Petrowski, outreach coordinator at Wareham Community Television. As you may know, WCTV is your source for live coverage of town meetings, Board of Selectmen meetings, and other municipal meetings, as well as local parades, gaitman games, and school sporting events. What you may not know is WCTV is also home to a wide variety of locally-produced original programming made by your Wareham neighbors. From morning talk shows to live music events to health and wellness programs, WCTV can help you put your ideas on television.
Hey, folks. My name is Bruce Scanon. I moved to Wareham back in the summer of 2009, and in the fall of 2009, was introduced to the wonderful world of WCTV.
I came to Wareham in 2003, and I couldn't wait for this station to open up.
My name is Lynell Butterfield. I live in Wareham and have for the past 12 years. I've been involved with Wareham Community Television since they moved to this building about three years.
My name is Mike Dunphy. I'm 24 years old. I've lived in Wareham my whole life.
I'm Patty Rumney, and I host Your Daily Gumbo.
I'm a volunteer, I'm a member, and I view myself as an independent producer.
I decided to do something a little different and launched Field of Music, which is a live music show.
I produce, direct, edit, shoot, work sound on a TV show that we have called At the Hub.
I'm just looking to make music and to also incorporate the music with that visual, which I think people are looking to see.
Bringing out the positives in Wareham rather than focusing on negatives, that's my goal.
So I have a couple of things: history, technology, and being informed and an educational mission.
We do this live show because I wanted the bands to be able to have an audience.
I've gotten people on the show who are in various boards and commissions in the town to explain to us what they do, what are their purposes, because I think most people don't really know.
I'm working on a program called I Wonder Where the Yellow Went, which is a story of Wareham sewer system.
We have the show on Wednesday nights, and it's great. We have live acts from around southeastern Massachusetts and Rhode Island.
We have some interesting guests. We've had animal chiropractors, acupuncturists, human chiropractors, equine-assisted therapists, belly dancers.
No, I have had no formal training.
Nothing on a real professional level.
No formal background.
Nothing.
That's one of the beauties of working as a volunteer at a place like WCTV. You don't need a lot of experience or any experience at all to come down and learn how to do what we do here.
The expertise was here, and it's willing expertise.
I just think it's fun.
Why do I keep doing it? It's a lot of fun.
I'm really enjoying my time here.
Keep watching.
For more information on these shows and the full program lineup for each of our stations and internet stream, visit us at www.warehamtv.org. And don't just watch TV, make it.
Are you tired of paying high bank fees?
It's not about the fees. It's really about you when you come here.
Why not join PCT Federal Credit Union, formed by educators and now open to the entire Wareham community? Unlike most banks, the credit union has no annual credit card fees, free checking, free ATM withdrawals, and generally, lower loan rates. And we are a not-for-profit organization, which means we can focus on serving members rather than maximizing our profit.
Banks didn't know my name. Never mind that. I had a husband and a son.
Some banks, you go, it's banking. You're doing this, you're doing your service, and you're leaving. Here, it's just friendly.
The people are what makes a big difference.
Join the credit union family at Plymouth County Teachers Federal Credit Union.